Thank you, Mr. Strong. It is Monday, August 21st at 7:30. I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Chesak, O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry, Stingline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Chesak, you have something you'd like?
Yes, I'd like to move the approval with one amendment to remove the data practice policy until the next meeting. If you'd like an explanation, give that.
Let's see if we get a second.
I'll go, I'll give it a second.
Second, O'Day.
Yeah.
Why don't you just let us know why you think that needs to be pulled? Sure.
There's a one or two elements that could be included. I think would be beneficial for the public. It's a very well put together data practice policy, and it just has to do with staff being able to charge for staff time. That isn't included in there.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for an amended agenda. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the consent calendar, which is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by a roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
So we have a motion by, uh, O'Day, was it?
Chesak.
Chesak, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yep.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. Next up is the presentations, item number six. Six A is a presentation by the Brainerd YMCA. We, yes, please. Come on up, Shane, tell us who you are, name and address, because you're on TV.
And serial number as well.
No, we don't need that.
Name and address. Shane Riffle, and I'm the CEO of the Brainerd Family YMCA, and I'm both honored and grateful that you're sharing a little bit of time for me tonight to share an update about our YMCA childcare project. So not long ago, I shared a more in-depth recollection and progress report with the EDA and where we are. But what I'd like to say is that we're making progress, and my primary reason to be here tonight is to quickly share an update, but also to invite you. We're to the point now where we're doing our groundbreaking. So on September 7th, I'm going to leave these over here for you to take later. But we're going to be breaking ground on September 7th at noon, and we would be honored if you all join us as dignitaries and supporters of this project. If you recall, three or four years ago, a number of stakeholders gathered to better understand the critical needs of childcare in our community, and this was pre-COVID. Back in those days, there was at least a 1,200-spot deficit, which is further amplified today with the effects of COVID. The YMCA, as we do, we meet critical community needs, and we decided at that point that we were going to stand up and be a part of the solution. And there are a number of home care providers, childcare centers, and nonprofits, just like the YMCA, that have committed to improving the situation. So we planned, we raised money, and to date, we've raised about $1.2 million out of a need of about $1.5 million. So we're almost to that point where we fully funded the development of a childcare center at 703 Oak Street in that downtown corridor, which will make it accessible to working families throughout our community, which has always been number one important to us. So we're planning on opening it late or at the end of the first quarter, probably 2024, and we'll be welcoming in 66 infants and toddlers, because that's where the greatest need is. Infants, there's, as many of you might know, there's about a one-to-four ratio, and toddlers is about a one-to-seven ratio. It's hardest to find those spots in the community. So that's where we committed to put our efforts. So I hope you'll join us. I wanted to give a quick thank you to the folks who have made this possible. It started off with Deed providing a grant that helped us purchase the building, but also Crow Wing County, and then you, the City of Brainerd, through your Main Street Downtown Revitalization and Main Street Grant. That was a big piece of the puzzle that allowed us to get to this point where we are. So thank you for your leadership. I'm a servant leader in this community, and we don't lift up the citizens, the kids, and the families without us working in concert and working together, people that care deeply about the people that we serve. So I'm standing here with you. I'm proud to be standing with you, and I hope that you will join me on September 7th at our groundbreaking. It'll be at 703 Oak Street. So if you have any questions, I can answer them right now. Otherwise, I will leave these for you. And if you have any questions, I don't hesitate to stop by the wire or give me a call. Also, one more thing, sorry, before I leave. We recently completed a feasibility study. So this is part of a larger comprehensive project, which will include the childcare center, the main building of the YMCA, Camp Vinasic, as well as hopefully a sports complex down on the Central Lakes College campus. So this was the initial feasibility and research that we've done that is helping guide our board's decision as we move forward. So I'll leave this with you, and you may very well have some more questions about this.
Any questions from Shane right now? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just leave these over here?
Yep, you can just set them right there. That'll work perfect. Thanks for bringing toys.
Give the toy later back to camp.
All right. Thank you. Item six B is the 2024 parks budget presentation by the park board. I'm going to turn it over to Jesse, our parks, uh, public works director, to introduce the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So per the city charter, the park board will present a proposed budget to the city council prior to September 1st. So included with your packets are the operating and capital budget requests as recommended by the park board at their August 15 special meeting. Please note that the final numbers for salary, benefits, and insurance are not yet updated and will be done once those numbers are available. And park board chair Andrew Shipe will be presenting the budget request.
Thanks, Jesse. Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to present our 2024 capital budget request.
Do the name and address.
Oh, yep, sorry. Andrew Shipe, 711 North 8th Street, Brainerd.
You're a TV star in all.
Oh, yeah. YouTube famous. So got our request tonight. It's, the details are in your packet, so I'm going to kind of go over the higher level plan here, the park board's philosophy. Now we can, pop, next slide. Thank you. So a little bit of story of how we've gotten to this point. This process started about two years ago. Park board mapped out a vision for each park, wanted to identify what we thought a park could be, what activities make sense there. Right, we're not doing sledding in Triangle Park, we're not playing baseball in the middle of Gregory Park. So kind of a vision, what each park could be, what facilities make sense there. And then we took on inventorying every piece of capital items in the park. So every bench, every tennis net, if you can think of it, it's on a spreadsheet now. And from there, we had joint meetings with you all. Those were really productive. We got a good sense of the vision that you want for the parks, what makes sense for the budget long-term. And so that has all led to tonight, we have our first capital budget request kind of with this new philosophy. So we'll dive into what that new philosophy looks like based on the work we've done to get here. So that's kind of where we're at. And before we dive into the budget, I do want to talk about what's next beyond this, right? We've done a ton of work as a board to get to this point, but there's a lot left to do. So as we discussed at our joint meeting, we have some catching up to do, right, in some capacity or another. And we've got some ideas, right, partnering with the organizations who run our named parks, doing some sponsorships or fundraising, exploring a referendum of some kind, and then looking at staffing as well, right? If we're focusing more on green space, do we have the staffing to maintain those green spaces, right, at a much reduced cost of having city staff maintain it than having different facilities that, right, are more expensive? So those are some of the catch-up plan ideas, and then we still have some big hurry questions to tackle, too. Softball, the facilities required to run softball are very expensive. We've been through this with the lights last year. The staffing time to have umpires, right, it's a, it's a big source of expenses. It doesn't bring in a lot of money, so there's ways, right, we can shift that balance, have to bring in more money, or try to spend less money on it. So that's a problem we have to tackle as a park board. Same thing with concessions. Those concession buildings that are approved by the Department of Health are not cheap. You have, right, special floors that are epoxied and food safe, all the way up to the appliances, having people staffed. Do we want to offer those as a, as a park system? Do we want the kind of food we have there now? How can we make sure that's making money, or at least being revenue neutral? And finally, Millsfield, right, it's a fantastic facility, but again, it's, it's a complex. There's a lot there. We haven't been investing what we need to to keep it as a pristine facility. Do we want to keep it? What's that look like? So no decisions on any of those, but just so you know, we don't feel like we're done. There's more that we need to tackle yet. So with that, we'll kind of dive into our capital budget request. We've got five different sections we'll run through. Maintaining and replacing, so that's really our, our start of, here's all this stuff. We want to make sure that we're funding to maintain it and, right, if it wears out, being able to replace it. Right, some things we can maintain, like a building, some things wear out, stop working, need to replace it. So that's kind of what that category will be. Then we have park basics. Those are things that we really can't itemize, right? It's the lawns in the parks. It's having trees. It's having ADA accessibility. After that, we have equipment, so tools the staff use to maintain the parks. Nothing too, too wild there. Also demolition. We have some things that don't fit the vision of the parks, so we want to start getting rid of those so we don't have maintenance or other costs associated with them. And finally, the, the board has picked out a couple of things that we think are cheaper to do now than later. So those are, well, we'll get into those. So I've got this in reverse order, so we'll kind of work backwards here. So this is $75,000 to do a couple of things that will, that the board thinks will help us save costs in the long run. So one example is the Bain Park garage roof. It's in terrible shape. If we fix it now, prevent a leak ruining the building, creating more, more maintenance. So we have that. We have gutters for the Gregory Park warming house. Again, we just put in cement sidewalks. It's also in front of the warming house where people are ice skating. They don't necessarily expect to ice skate on the sidewalk. So there's some risk of injury and then destroying that new cement. And finally, Lum Park pavilions one and two, they're also in, in pretty rough shape. We can put some money into them now. We can extend their life compared to something like the Kiwanis Park Pavilion that needed a lot more work. So beyond that, we have demolition. This is $26,000. These are, again, things that we don't feel our vision, or don't fit our vision for certain parks. So Gustafson Park has a tiny little unloved shed. Lum Park has the maintenance building that staff have moved out of. Memorial Park also has a, an unloved shed. And finally, J.C.'s Park, the North Pavilion and playground are in rough shape. We put in the larger playground at J.C.'s, and so that's kind of the designated playground going forward. So those are things that don't fit particularly with J.C.'s. We'd be willing to partner with the J.C.'s as well. We haven't reached out to them yet, but that's something we'd be willing to look at as well. Next is equipment. This is a real quick one. $30,000 for something to lift garbage cans into the back of pickup trucks. So that's what we got there. And then park basics. So again, these are things that don't make sense to itemize in a capital budget. Highlights, right, trees, the ADA upgrades. One example is the ADA upgrade from this year at Kiwanis Park. Part of that turned into the new United Way Bourne Learning Trail, which is fantastic, and then weed and feed as well. So just kind of the, the park basics. And then we've got maintain and replace. So this is really the heart of what we talked about in, I think, really in both of our joint meetings. So our goal with this is to begin funding individual items, so that is benches, lights, fountains, splash pads, walls, anything in a park, baseball fields, the Miracle Field, right, special surface. And the, the thought behind that is we want to have funds available to maintain and/or replace items as they wear out. Right, so the example, I was kind of getting at this earlier, Pavilion, we can do maintenance on that, keep it in good shape. Something like a water bottle filler, right, that's going to break at some point, so just replacing that. Again, this is not the full amount needed for most items. This is, this number is about 2% of the value of every item in the parks. So that's not, right, the full amount that we need to replace things on the schedule they're on. We've got a couple of examples we'll take a look at of ways this will help, ways this isn't enough, but it's a start. And yeah, so our goal is really just to, to make sure we're starting to have that money available so that when things do come up, we're prepared and have money. We don't have to come to you like last fall with the softball lights. We, we want to avoid that. That was, that was not fun. So I've got a couple of examples here. One is the splash pad, right, and these are in line with our projections. The numbers, right, are not perfect because I'm inventing a scenario. So in this case, we've estimated the value at about $500,000. The manufacturer provides a 30-year warranty. So in 2024, of that $510,000, we're looking at 10,000 would be allocated to the splash pad. If we were funding this completely, to say, we know in 30 years, we may have to totally replace this, we would be asking for $16,000 in a bit. But the goal here is that 31 years from now, let's say splash pad burns out, struck by lightning, something, right, catastrophic. Five years ago, I think, we would have shown up tonight and said, hey, it broke. We need $500,000. That's not a position we want to be in. It's not a position we want to put you in. So with this plan, what this would work us towards is saying, hey, you know what? Lightning hit the splash pad. It's terrible because it's a little bit ahead of our schedule. We need $50,000 more this year, right? It's more than we expected, but we've prepared for it. We've planned for it. So it's a surprise, but a manageable surprise. So with that, we have a, there's still work to do, right? This isn't going to magically solve all of our problems. One example of that is the Buffalo Hills Playground. So we've estimated that to be replaced in 2025. So if we're saving 2% of the $80,000 that we valued it at, we're going to have a grand total of $3,200 in 2025 to replace it. Not, right, where we need to be at to replace it on that schedule, but it is, again, putting us a step forward of, hey, we do have some money. And in that case, right, Buffalo Hills, I picked as well because we could partner with the Lions. And they've already approached us and said, hey, we'd like to improve the playground. And so if we have some money, that opens up grants for them. We can help, right, get some kind of matching contributions. And it puts us at least a step forward towards replacing that. So with that, I'll just kind of wrap it up. This is our first request with this new philosophy. We appreciate your partnership throughout this process. We want to, I, we're all in the, aligned on the same goal now, which I feel great about. And we're looking forward to continuing as we tackle these big questions. We want to keep working with you as we address softball, concessions, things like that. Get your input, get your thoughts on where you want to see this 20, 30 years from now. And finally, just a huge thanks to staff. We've had, we're meeting about every two weeks as a park board, so it's doubling staff time every time we meet. And it's one thing for us to show up. It's another thing to take away staff time every time we meet. So they've just been, been really helpful. With that, any questions you have?
Any questions for Andrew?
Is there going to be a budget presented?
Oh, sorry, it was in the, the packet.
It's in the.
Oh, it's just in the packet. You're not going to talk about it. Okay.
Oh, I kind of, I went through the, the sections.
Okay, no.
There it is. Thank you. Anything else, Gabe?
No, I'll, I'll look at it.
Any other questions for Andrew?
If you can go to the capital items section.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Shipe, you had mentioned the, I was a little vague on the explanation, something to, $30,000, something to pick up garbage cans and put in the back of a pickup. You talking about like a lift gate on a?
Yes, a lifter. Yep.
Okay, and then, um, um, there's one thing, I did talk to Jesse about this. Replacement on that SIP you provided in our packet. Water bottle filling station, I believe, at Lyman Pete White. Is that a replacement or a new purchase?
Lyman Pete White is a new purchase.
Okay, that was essentially an accident to put it in there. I mean, it's, since it's, that's specifically replacement.
That was mostly an example, right, of something that we have in our parks. Gregory has one as well, that, right, when it fails, it's not necessarily something we can maintain. It's something we'd have to just order a new one.
Yeah, I think it's like in the next year or two, so apparently they don't have much of a lifetime on those, or?
Yeah, the one at Gregory had a, a very short life as well.
Okay.
So.
And then I have to ask, on that SIP, it's got a lot of stuff, and it goes out, I don't know, 190 years or something. It goes a long way out. That's fine. There's a, a tree, I think, in Lum Park. And it, it says a tree is, at the very bottom, virtually, there's no replacement date or cost. It's at the very bottom of the spreadsheet. What is that kind of done as a humorous item, or a lean, a leaned-over tree? Is that?
Is that the, the bent tree at Gregory Park?
The bent tree, the bent tree. Is that actual something that's purchased, or?
No, that was.
Is that just kind of a joke?
A little bit. It is next to the playground, and it's, I'll say, as popular as the playground right next to it. So it's partly a joke, but also partly that playground is valuable to a lot of kids because of that tree.
Got it?
So it's an odd situation at best.
How do you replace that, as I guess I was looking for?
Cast an epoxy. I don't know.
Nurture it well. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Chesak, and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I do have a question now that I'm seeing the capital. Like, I remember the joint meetings we have, and I, and I understand your 2% long-term maintenance plan, and I respect it. But I thought at the end of the meetings, it was kind of agreed upon that that's not the City of Brainerd's philosophy. We, we can't handle one department completely different than we handle all of the other departments in the city. So we can't just be piling up a bunch of money here, saying, nobody touch, that's the parks, in case they want to spend it on whatever random thing they choose someday. It needs to be identified with projects of money you're going to spend next year on itemized things. It's not, otherwise, we're just building up a park slush fund. Well, everybody else needs to justify where, why they get money. And I thought, I thought that's how we ended the meetings. I didn't know we were just going to come in and say, hey, just give us a half million dollars and trust us.
Yes, our takeaway was, I think, the example of a fire truck or a snowplow, where we do have to save up over the course of several years to, right, make that larger purchase. And so we felt like a lot of these were, were similar things, right, not in total value, but in.
But we don't just give the street department a half a million dollars a year and say, let me know when you buy the fire trucks. They come with their capital plan, saying, I need a fire truck this year, or a plow truck. They don't need fire trucks.
Yes, and we do have.
But your plan doesn't propose to do that.
So we do have an itemized list of every item that would make up that, that amount.
But you're not presenting it here tonight.
That is also in the packet.
Okay.
So I, I don't want to go through a 350-row spreadsheet, but I certainly can.
Yeah, no, let's make it as confusing as possible for the public. I, I'm all about that. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions for Mr. Shipe? The one that I ask every year, Gregory Park fountain.
There's money to maintain and replace that in the.
Is that in that maintenance?
Yes, yep. So every.
There, well, 510 won't even touch it, so.
But we got to start saving for it.
We got to start saving for it. Any, 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 I mean, just because it's dear and beloved, as much as the water tower possibly. What's the, 2033? That's, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
That'll.
Just 10 short years away.
10 short years away.
Yes.
New fountain, new and improved. Any other questions for Mr. Shipe? Andrew, thank you very much for coming forth.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, we're starting to talk budget, so you're very timely. Thank you. Next up is item seven, our council committee reports. Seven A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had nine items tonight. The first, first item was direction on active code enforcement cases. Motion was to go ahead with staff recommendations, and I so moved.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day.
609 11th Avenue Northeast and PID 41191502 are both repeat offenders. If you want to know more detail, you can ask James on those. 301 9th Avenue, or 9th Street South, there was, there was some abatement conditions that were coming up last week. Those are taken care of, so we didn't make any motions regarding that, other than let it go.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second item, item was event, uh, street closure application for Touch a Truck and the Flapjack Festival. Motion was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, next item was approval of an event, event, street closure application, neighborhood potluck. And a motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application. I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day.
This is a, just a neighborhood potluck in the Fulton Avenue neighborhood, and I would just say, I think it'd be great if every neighborhood did one of these. And that is all.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Mr. President, number four was an event, street closure application for First Lutheran Rally Day. And a recommendation and motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number five was awarding improvement 2117 Lum Park Road SPRA project. As staff recommended to approve an award, the improvement 2117 Lum Park SPR project contract to Anderson Brothers in the amount of $241,490.13, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number six was adopting a resolution for the 2024 Transit Operating Grant. Recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution entering into the grant agreement with MINDOT for providing transit services. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman.
This is the annual agreement with MINDOT, saying they will cover 95% of the cost. We cover 5%. And then capital, we cover 10%, and they cover 90.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Has there been any discussion moving forward about the operation of this particular program and where we end up looking forward? I mean, I, I know it's vital and all those things, and we have had small discussions about it, but, you know, we, we've got three buses driving around at any given time, and rarely are they what I would call remotely full. At some point, do we start looking at our capacity versus what the ridership is? I'd like to see some kind of statistics at some point that talks about how many riders we have at any given time, what we're doing at any given time. It, it's not that I don't think we should have this. It's just that I think maybe the way we have this set up is, is becoming extremely inefficient, and it might be time to start looking at what a better process for doing that might be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have some unanswered questions based on the rate for your fares and stuff. I've been asking questions. I'm not getting any concrete answers or anything, so it's a little frustrating. And, you know, I kind of agree with the mayor's question, but I, I think the answer is when the Transit Advisory Commission team up with the Safety and Public Works and officially bankrupt the transit program, we're going to stop funding it. It's not going to get levy dollars. So that's when the program ends, Mr. Mayor. I, I hope you get the answers and the plan that you're looking for. I've been asking for years and haven't received anything. I hope you have better luck than I did. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. O'Day.
I'll just say we're waiting for that time when we see a new contract. We'll see what the proposals are, if any of them want to be under contract with us again or not, and we'll have to make a decision at that point through the recommendation of the TAC committee.
This is, this resolution is the agreement with MINDOT.
Mm-hmm.
What we do from there is really, I believe, up to us. And I think we've shown recently, there's work to be done. Mr. Johnson, you brought some up. Mr. Mayor, you brought some up. But I, I really think that if we're going to have a transit company, a bus company, we're going to need to make this deal with MINDOT and then fix our problem. I mean, we talked about rates, but Mr. Mayor just brought up, there's up, there's, and Mr. Johnson, there's work to be done. I would hope the Transit Committee is doing some preliminary work. We'll see. So, yeah, Mr. Chesak.
As transit liaison, there is a consultant working with our transit department, and I would have to defer to Mr. Dean to tell us when their report may be coming in. I think we'd assist.
And I would have to defer to Mr. Dean to tell us when their report may be coming in. I think would assist us a lot in finding out some of these details we're questioning. And of course, there's going to be a new RFP. I guess it's going to have a lot of eyes on it coming up for the next year when that gets put out for a proposal. And the thing you got to remember is this is not a bid. It's not a low bid proposition. It is a service contract. And just to refresh the memory of the council, two years ago, the, there was virtually only one proposal. The other one, which everybody keeps referring to, was non-responsive. They were given extra time to respond with required documents that the state of Minnesota required, or else they wouldn't accept it if had we approved it. Other things that were going on at that time were drivers were difficult. If you go watch the school board meeting, I believe at the same night this council approved that proposal for three years. They had a lengthy conversation about the third-party contractor they have for school buses, not able to find drivers. So prior to the current provider being hired, there was another provider. And before that was the other person, non-responsive proposal two years ago. They were taking drivers off the city buses and putting them on school buses so they could accommodate that contract with the school district. Furthermore, they had in their proposal to remove the transit office from the city hall, which was unacceptable. If we would have agreed to that proposal, they could have taken under that contract and removed staff, their transit staff dispatching out of this building, which is unacceptable. So there's a lot of details that are forgotten over the last two years or are failed to maybe conveniently forgotten. And a lot of criticism has been laid down on transit, Tac specifically. On one hand, we get criticized for not making a recommendation on fares, and then we get criticized for making a recommendation on the proposal.
Is this for or against the resolution?
This is in favor of passing the resolution. What, what are the other things that have been talked about in favor of on this resolution, Mr. Bevins? I haven't heard a lot discussed there, so I'd like to have a fair conversation about this. When I hear all these other conversations unrelated to this particular topic. So if somebody's going to do it, you have to allow others to do the same, I would say. So that's my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak.
You're more than welcome.
So getting back to the motion to adopt the resolution. And second, is anything else on that? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Chesak?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item is on a lighter note, but maybe a little heavier in our hearts. We're going to revisit the idea of Cousin Eddie leaving us for good. Sean, if you could just pull a picture up for everybody, because we love this guy so much. I wish there was a better picture from the back because there's more rust or the inside because the dash fell apart. But we couldn't, we couldn't trade this, this big truck in because it was too valuable and they would have had to pay us to get the new plow. So we're going to have to put him up for option, and the motion coming out of committee was to go ahead and authorize to sell the single axle axle dump plow truck on the public auction site. And I sadly move.
Second.
We have a motion in all seriousness and heartfelt condolences from Mr. Oday, second by Stengline. Any discussion on Cousin Eddie? Oh, Chief?
Does it come with a plow?
Doesn't look like it.
Darn, I'd buy it.
Called to say it clean?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed. We had one name.
All right. Thing, Mr. President, number eight is, this was a discussion on our draft of the 2024 through 2020 or 2033 Capital Improvement Plan. This is our streets projects. I'm sure, did everybody get a copy of these? I believe so. Mr. Dean came up with projects planned for our next 10 years. Nothing in concrete right now. Really trying to come up with a philosophy going forward on how to determine what streets and how much street we can do. We try to get it done all together in 40 years, so about two miles of our 80s streets each year and climbing if we add more neighborhoods. Philosophy was, and you can agree or disagree, with the street scan, if we get that next year, we objectively target the worst roads without favoritism. Hopefully going to ask BPU to map out the pipes and how old they are, so we know exactly which neighborhoods and which parts of which neighborhoods and which streets have a combination of both being bad. But we haven't come up with a, a number exactly of what we want to keep it at each year or slightly climb from with inflation. But that's kind of our philosophy where we want to start at and just ask BPU to maybe come up with that map, hopefully sometime next year. It'll make planning going forward from next year a heck of a lot easier. There was no motion on this.
Thank you. Any questions on the capital 10-year plan, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Bevins or Mr. President. I, I looked at it and I like the five-year capital plan that we unanimously approved last year. That is our current plan. So I think any amendments to our actual capital improvement plan that we actually adopted and actually have should be justified and not just create a whole new 10-year plan. I, I commend you for trying to go 10 years instead of five, but we already have a plan. And I think we should stick with that and justify any amendments. I'm not going to talk about the streets. I'll let Mr. Oday handle that, but I am going to talk about sanitary and storm. They're pretty steady on their revenue. Sanitary brings in about $570,000 a year. Storm brings in about $380,000 a year. Our current five-year capital plan knows that and spends the money as such. Where we spend over five years, about 1.6 million in construction and 1.2 million in maintenance and wages. Storm, same way, about twice as many in wages and a third into, into construction. This current document, I suppose you can call it, is proposing dramatic increases over the next five years between just the sanitary and stormwater enterprise funds. It proposes over a three and a half million dollar shortfall. You divide that up by our rates and our number of hookups, and that's about $400 a household a year. And that's just sanitary and storm. That's not streets. That's not the water lines. That's not anything. When we look to amend our current five-year capital improvement plan in the future, I think we need to still try to maintain financial solvency going into the future. And I don't think we should be approving drastic increases without ahead of time talking about how much we are going to be increasing taxes and how much we are going to be increasing rates. Especially with sanitary and storm, because those are enterprise funds and it's simple math. You have X number of hookups, you can spend X number of dollars at X rate, XYZ, I suppose, in three different numbers. But I'm not happy with this document. I don't think it bears any resemblance to the actual five-year capital improvement plan we have. And I hope, I hope we can look to that to kind of guide us going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further comments or questions on the presentation this evening? Hearing none, please proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Our final item, number nine, was adopting a resolution declaring Southwest 4th Street washout an emergency. And motion coming out of committee was to adopt an attached resolution declaring Southwest 4th Street washout as an emergency. I so move.
We have a motion by Oday, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
I think this is on our last meeting, correct? Two weeks ago?
Yeah.
So in two weeks, this thing has probably tripled in size just from a little bit of rain. We haven't even had that much rain. Obviously, we shut down the road. If you went and looked at it, you could see that what we joked around as a beach before is, is almost a peninsula across the entire river now. So instead of waiting until a car actually does fall in there, we might as well declare this an emergency now. That way we can skip over competitive bidding and work directly with a contractor to get this done sooner rather than later and not have to have that road shut down all winter.
Thank you, Mr. Oday. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Resolution.
Oh, resolution. Thank you. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Chesak?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yep.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Anything else, Mr. Oday?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is 7B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four quick items on the agenda tonight, the first of which is to approve a conditional job offer to Daniel Locke. The motion is to approve a conditional job offer for Mr. Daniel Locke for the finance manager position, subject to successful completion and pre-employment hiring process. And further, that Mr. Locke's initial step placement be step five of the finance manager wage grid, $47.54 per hour within October 30th, 2023 tentative start date, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chesak?
About the, the plan for this, are we saving money based on the, perhaps a delay in hiring? Is there, I know it was budgeted for 23, I believe. So is there a savings in that account or that particular line item? I, I'm not sure who would answer that. Maybe Connie?
Mr. Johnson believes he could take a stab.
I, I could take a stab at it, Jeff.
Okay.
Councilman Chesak. So, yeah, we approved the BPU budget in December of '22 in 2023. The finance manager at that time was a department head. The salary was significantly higher than what we're hiring this new employee on it. And it was budgeted for that entire, for this entire year. So not having it filled for a while and a lower salary than was budgeted initially, there's going to be a lot of savings for the water and light fund.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any other comments? Aye. Hearing none. This is just a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up, we considered an employee policy manual update. And the motion was to approve the proposed employee policy manual amendment relative to commercial driver's license training. And I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Mr. Johnson?
So there were some changes to federal law last year that based on training for CDLs and who bears the costs and a lot of things changed. Basically, it costs the city $4,000 to $6,000 for our employees to get a CDL. We're amending the employee policy manual that if somebody gets that $6,000 license and leaves us right away, they have to pay us back.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. We considered another policy. It was the update to the non-DOT drug, alcohol, and cannabis policy. The motion was to approve the updated City of Brainerd Drug, Alcohol, and Cannabis Testing and Drug-Free Workplace Act policy for non-commercial drivers, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
This is related to the legalization of cannabis and just, we're, we're still going to keep cannabis-free workplaces to keep city hall and all of our departments safe places to work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
All right. And then we considered applying double fees to after-the-fact zoning and subdivision processes and permits. And the motion was to direct staff to draft an ordinance amending section 1015.15 of the city code pertaining to collecting double fees for after-the-fact zoning and subdivision processes and permits and present it as a first reading at the next council meeting. And I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
So we can double the fees if somebody does something without getting the permit in advance. Then they have to pay twice when they come in to get the permit. We are permitted to do that. That's what we're going to amend this to do. Some cities do, some don't. I think we've been having, not a lot, couple, three a year of people not following our zoning process. But we've had a couple problems, so let's, we decided to maybe double the fee on them to maybe incentivize them to follow the rules.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
I don't disagree with doubling it, but I would just kind of, a little cautious perhaps if somebody were to say, oops. I come to the city and say, hey, I did this without knowing I needed to do this. Is there any way we could draft that to say, you know, if we find out, that's a different story. If the city finds out they haven't followed the process, I see that as a completely different, you know, deal as far as, oh, I put in new, a new door and I was supposed to get a, a permit, you know? And then we didn't, they come and say, hey, after the fact, is that something we could look at? I meant to ask this in an email and I, I just forgot, so.
This is just a direction to staff, correct?
Start the ordinance.
Start the process.
That's what I wanted to bring up.
All options are on the table, Mr. Chesak. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Oday?
I just have a question. Is this a one-time, the first time they come in, or is this permanent, double?
So it will be just on the one zoning infraction they have, that one time. But we are also looking at, or staff's also looking at, maybe using code section 320 to start finding, like, short-term rentals that are out of compliance. So that's, that's a separate, separate angle, but this is just doubling the fees for people who have a zoning infraction for the one time, for the one infraction they have.
Mr. Krambeck, you had something you'd like to add? No? Okay. Anybody else have any comments? So this starts the process. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item eight, unfinished business. 8A is a call for applicants, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wow, here we go. Before we do our call for applicants, I have two recommendations to the council for two separate positions. The first of which is one, Mr. Paul Sandy to the EDA.
Move approval.
A second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Welcome, Paul.
Welcome back aboard. The second is one, Mary Cope to the library board contingent on an actual application being filled out. I was told verbally that she would like to be approved. We have some time on this one before they need it.
So move Johnson.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, second on this end by
Chesak.
Chesak.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I, I just want to clarify that my motion was to approve the appointment of Mary Cope to the Kichigami Regional Library Board, not the Brainerd Library Board.
Right. I believe I just said library board, so thank you for that correction.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and hopefully we'll see that actual application forthcoming. Mr. Mayor?
All right, now that we've taken care of that incredible work, the following boards have seats available. Charter commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library board no longer has a seat available. Kichigami, well, it just says library board.
That's Brainerd Library Board.
That's Brainerd Library, Brainerd Library Board.
We actually have an opening there, too.
Ladies and gentlemen, it has just come to the mayor's attention that there are multiple library boards in the city of Brainerd.
We try and keep you focused on what's really important.
So as I'm reading here, there is one seat available on the Brainerd Library Board as listed, library board, one term. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, five terms expiring 2024. Tac, one term expiring 2023. We also, no, no longer have a term on the EDA.
Yes, we still have one open on the EDA.
Well, it says only one.
I know, I know what it says, but we have one.
I can only give you what is in front of me.
Nobody reads the teleprompter better than you, Mr. Mayor.
The words are there.
We have an applicant. Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
I, I do.
You have what?
I read it better than you.
Yeah. I believe you could. And as city council president, I have one term for the parking commission to expire in 2020.
Are you sure? Are you sure you have one?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, I want to make sure.
The regional or city?
Yeah. Thank you. It is the all-important parking commission. Next, next up, under unfinished business is item 8B, the final reading of proposed ordinance 1554, creating chapter 16 and section 1600 of the city code, use of cannabis in public places. Mr. Krambeck, anything you want to bring up? Or no, this is Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. So attached to the, is the proposed ordinance that was previously presented to the council at the August 7th meeting for the first reading. Staff is recommending conducting the final reading of the ordinance 1554, creating chapter 16 and section 1600 of the city code, holding a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, and then followed by a vote on adoption of proposed ordinance 1554.
Perfect. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. The first order of business is to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1554, an ordinance creating chapter 16 and section 1600 of the city code, and dispense with the actual reading, which must be unanimous. Is there a motion to approve the final reading of this ordinance? Motion by Chesak is our second.
Second.
Second by Steng- Second by Stengline. Any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. It's now time to open the public hearing. If you're here to discuss proposed ordinance fifteen-fifty-four regarding cannabis and use in public places, now's your time to let us know. Come right up to the microphone. Give us your name and address, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
My name is Shane Fitch.
Come, you had to kind of come up to the microphone, Shane.
My name is Shane Fitch.
Yep.
I've lived here pretty much all my life. I've raised my kids here.
What's your address, Shane?
Uh, fifteen-two forty-seven Colony Road twenty-five, Northeast of Brainerd.
Okay.
And I honestly feel that the state has done a good job in this matter. It states clearly in the laws that you are not to use cannabis by minors. That's, that's pretty well given. So, the fact of doing it in a public area, I think you should honestly cover tobacco. Also, how about vapes, cigars? The fact that you're picking on cannabis is ridiculous. Our police officers have more to do than chase around the citizens to give them citations. How about they go after the meth addicts, the fentanyl dealers, the coke heads, the heroin addicts? Have you been to any other city in Minnesota like Bemidji? The crime and the drugs are ridiculous, and these guys have enough on their plate than to deal with cannabis. Minnesota covered it. It's legal. If you don't like the smell of it, get over it. Otherwise, ban it all, not just cannabis. Tobacco, vaping, everything in public. How about drinking? I'm not, I don't like the smell of drinking. How about you ban that, too? You're being biased. It's ridiculous. How many of you actually smoke cannabis? Any of you? Not too many people sit there and are willing to stand up to, in public, and say, yeah, I smoke cannabis. I have a medical card, which allows me to do so. I'm playing by the state laws. So, why can't I sit and smoke my medicine as long as there's no toddlers around, no children around? I'm not hurting anybody? What if I'm just sitting at the park fishing, smoking a joint, nobody else around but me? Why should any of the officers have to waste their time coming up and harassing me to give me a citation? So what, the revenue goes back into whatever else it does? It's ridiculous. Honestly. Honestly, can I get a raise of hands from any of you up here? How many of you smoke cannabis? Now, how many people in this audience right here behind you smoke cannabis? So, you don't represent all of Brainerd. You don't. You may be Brainerd City Council, but unless you use cannabis, you don't represent the cannabis users and the public that uses cannabis, the ones that do it legally, legitimately. We've been discriminated for years, and it's ridiculous. Minnesota made it legal. Bottom line, okay, if they're smoking around minors or children, then by all means, officer, please turn around and give them a citation. They're smoking and driving, smoking under the influence and driving. Give them a citation, put their asses in jail. It's a DUI, right? It's pretty plain and clear. But bottom line is, I should be able to sit in the park, play basketball with my friends, and sit down and smoke a joint if there's no children around and not have to worry about getting harassed by police. They have better things to do. And for the Karens walking down the street that don't like the smell of it, guess what? Even if you make it not able to be smoked in public in Brainerd, you can't stop me from having it in my pocket. And I can make it a point, and I encourage every other cannabis user to make it a point to stand next to you in line when they see you because you're not representing the public. You're representing the city council members. Everyone of you has a position that represents your area, bottom line. And in that area also has cannabis users. Minnesota allowed us to grow up to how many plants? So, you're going to have to smell it, whether you walk by somebody's house, whether you walk by me in the supermarket, you're going to have to smell it. Get over it. As long as we're doing it responsibly, there shouldn't be an issue about it. I think you guys have a lot more on your plate than this. Because by the sounds of it, some of you don't want to look through full documentation on other issues when they had it clearly pointed out and told you that they're in the memos on the, on the points. So, I mean, take your time, go through the other stuff. Make sure our budgets are going right. Get this off your plate. Cannabis has been beat to death about it, and it's time our public actually made some revenue off of it. Maybe encourage people to start growing hemp farms. You know how much it can be made with hemp? I mean, the cannabis plant isn't just smoking marijuana, and there's no reason to be hiding it and be ashamed of it. Honestly, as a citizen, I'm more worried about cops harassing me because of it, because I might have it in my pocket. And I'm grateful that Minnesota's finally turned around and legalized it because there's a whole lot of us that are afraid to stand up here and talk to you, gentlemen and women, about it because they're afraid of repercussions and harassment, because of how many years of it being prohibited and not allowed for us to actually do it. Well, now it's legal. Now you can leave us the hell alone and carry on with the actual issues. Because, you know what, I don't like walking past bars and smelling people that are drunk, but yet there's alcohol at how many public establishments in town here? How many public functions allow alcohol? What do you think those people do? They get behind the wheel and drive. I would much rather have these officers turn around watching them, making sure they don't kill my family members, than worry about the guy smoking a joint fishing down at the park. So, please do your damn jobs and actually represent the people, not just your selfish interests.
Thank you. Come on up, state your name and address.
Uh, my name's David Cobbs. I live at thirteen fifteen L Street Northeast. Um, all on the record, I've been a daily smoker of cannabis for thirty years. I've never hit it. I was never in the closet about it. And for anyone that thinks that now that it's legal, that it's going to suddenly be everywhere in your parks, it's already been there. Last year, I went to, uh, what is it, Earth in the Park? Yeah. Grabbed a buddy of mine, went to the edge, away from everyone, smoked a joint. It wasn't legal then. I still did it because it's just a part of my life. I'm not ashamed of it, no more than anyone else should be. Um, but I understand the people that don't like the smell of it. I get their position. My wife doesn't smoke. As a result, I don't smoke in the house. When I'm outside, I try to keep it away so it doesn't blow at her, but it's going to happen. As he pointed out, it's legal. People are going to deal with it. Um, I can't stand the smell of petrol oil. I work at Walmart. I smell that crap multiple times a day beyond strong. It makes me gag. But I'm not so entitled to think that I can ask someone to impose a policy that says you can't wear that because someone might not like the scent. There's going to be people that are probably going to bring up their concern about cannabis in public because they're afraid of issues or fighting or whatnot. I'm pretty sure the chief police could say that, uh, how often do you respond to a domestic disturbance or a fight? Is it someone that's drunk as opposed to someone that smoked a joint? Oh, probably doesn't happen, or at least very seldomly. Um, if you are dead set on imposing this, it is what it is, then I would ask that you actually wait a year. Uh, perhaps set up a temporary idea of you have to be a hundred feet away from other people that aren't, you know, from kids or whatnot. It's already in the law that you can't, but then specify that. Um, revisit it in a year and see how many complaints there have been. Like I said, I've smoked for thirty years. I don't want to go and sit next to the family that's on the jungle gym and smoke a joint. I don't want to do that. It's, that's my lifestyle. I don't want to impose that on them or their kids. Yeah, you're going to get your young teeny-babas that are going to have that attitude of rebellion that are going to do it because they're young and stupid. I was young and stupid at one point. I can admit it. Um, most of them aren't, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for the majority of us users that were not like that. So, I'd ask wait a year, see how many complaints there are, revisit it. Instead of reacting on emotion and the sudden fear, actually get some data and see where we are in a year and then proceed forward. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Anybody else wishes to address the council on their thoughts on this proposed ordinance? Anybody else? Come on up, state your name and address. Thanks for coming forward.
Christopher Smith, six oh one Third Avenue Northeast, Brainerd. I've been a resident and citizen for twenty nineteen years now. Um, anyhow, uh, my concern with this is, is, has there been any other, uh, ordinance in effect for, uh, public alcohol consumption, uh, with campgrounds? Um, any, uh, public consumption of tobacco products in campgrounds or anywhere else? That becomes kind of privatized area. It's public. Go to your campground. You're in a private area. It's your campground space, um, which most of these are. Um, so, public areas, what exactly is a public area? And where does that line draw? Um, such as, like, go back to tobacco smoking. You walk into a supermarket, you walk back out, there's three, four people standing right by the door, and you inhale secondhand smoke. Is that, you know, is that good for, for anybody to, to be around? Um, so, when we're addressing the issue of smoking in public places or anything else, I would just ask if we're going to do that, then let's take it a step further and make it smoking period in public places. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else who wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance, now's your time. Come on up, give us your name, your home address, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
My name is Jamie Crellor. I recently moved, but was two nineteen Southwest Sixth Street here in Brainerd. Um, I've been in Brainerd since I was seventeen. I've been smoking marijuana pretty much my whole life. I am also medicinal, and I've agreed with everyone who has stepped up here. If I'm out in a public place, I have smoked in public. I'm not going to smoke by you. If anything, I'm going to go away from you just out of pure respect. Now, not everyone is like that, but I'm tired of just being shut down right away, like, like the gentleman just said. Give us a chance and see where, how many complaints you actually get. I read your last, uh, write-up from the seventh, and one of you gentlemen even said, well, if we're going to do that with marijuana, why don't we do that with cigarettes? And I believe Davis spoke up and said, if we're going to waste our time chasing around people smoking cigarettes in a park, then I guess that's what they're going to do, but don't you think that's a waste of time, a cigarette in a park? So, that's just my piece. There's nothing wrong with weed, man. I smoke every day, and I go to work. Pay my child support, pay my bills. Davis has gotten me a few times over the years before we were legalized, and that's just one of the many Brainerd officers that have caught me with weed. I will always and forever have it with me. Like the one gentleman said, you don't like the smell, you're going to smell it anyway. Doesn't matter where you're at. Bigger populated areas, you're probably going to smell it more. It's just what it is, the fact that we legalized it.
Thank you for coming forward. Come on up, state your name and address. Let us know what you think about this ordinance.
I am Lori Smith, six oh one Third Avenue Northeast, Brainerd. Um, everybody's got some great ideas that they're talking about. I'd just like to touch point also on the mental health aspects. You don't get mental help, mental health help from alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, but it is proven that you do get it for your mental health, for your anxiety, your bipolar disorder, your borderline personality disorder, and even some schizophrenia. Think of, when you think about removing it from the public, think about those people who are having the anxiety attacks that, that pill takes up to thirty minutes to kick in, and it's very important that we respond to that quicker than thirty minutes. High anxiety is increased heart rate. Some, sorry, I have anxiety. Um, I do have worked with people in mental health. Some of them, when their anxiety gets high, they do actually hallucinate, which would lead to somebody thinking schizophrenia, but it's not. Small doses of the marijuana, the THC, and the CBD in different combinations can help reduce that in a much faster timeline, and there's not enough attention even paid to that yet. So, if you're thinking of somebody having an anxiety attack and not knowing what to do on the edge of a park away from children, what happens if somebody doesn't know if they called the police? Do you think that that helps? Sometimes it does in the right situations. Otherwise, it increases your anxiety, and then your heart rate kicks up, and then you've got a whole nother situation. So, it's not just about wanting to get high. It's about the medical benefits, both physically and mentally. Your cancer patients, do they have to sit at home to smoke to get the relief from the THC for their pain so that they can go out with their families and maybe eat at a picnic? Or those last few days while they are in pain to be able to enjoy what life that they have? I have worked with somebody recently that is stage three terminal. She has two choices. She can do massive radiation, six days a week, one day off, and that will give her maybe three to five years, maybe. Within that three to five years, her studies that she has read from her doctor, this will come back at a WILTAC at least three different areas, and she can no longer go through chemo after that because she will have gone through the most intense that she can, which has basically riddled her with pain and everything else from the chemo and hasn't given her much. Now that it's legal, she's smoking. It's not going to improve her life. There's no guarantee of that, but it will improve the quality of her life for the little bit of time that she does have left to be able to be with her adult child, possibly see a grandchild come in. Wouldn't you want to be able to do that legally? Sit down at the park watching your grandchild, somebody said maybe a hundred feet away, have a little joint, not skinning stone, but enough to be able to enjoy that while she can. It's more than just getting high, and that's the important thing to remember. Somebody else pointed out, there's not an increase. I know a lot of people that were so excited about this becoming legal. I've noticed no increase in people walking down the street, smoking a joint. I've never seen anybody try to light up in the theater. As soon as vapes came out, they had to adopt something to say, you can't smoke that in the theater. It's not a cigarette, but it's vaping. You still can't smoke. But I'm not seeing that with marijuana either. So, I just ask that you take more time. Somebody said maybe a year. Look at all the other effects and that the way it can actually improve other people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in the public hearing part of proposed ordinance fifteen-fifty-four, so if you're in the audience or online, and if you're online, you hit star three, and that'll let us know that you're online and you wish to speak on this, or if you're in the audience, come on forth. I'll ask a second time.
Actually, Mr. President, I would actually like to turn the tables.
Actually, you can't. This is the, this is where public gets to speak to us, and if you wish to speak a second time, I'm going to ask a third time if anybody hasn't spoke, and then I'll give you a chance to speak a second time if you wish to. But you can't ask questions, and you can't ask questions of the police chief because this is the public forum. It's your time to testify as to what you feel we need to know. Okay? All right. Last call. If you wish to speak a second time, come on up, but I think we got the idea. State your name and address.
Once again, my name's David Cobbs, and I live on thirteen fifteen L Street Northeast, Brainerd. What I was going to say was, you gave us the opportunity. Um, I don't mean to come across as cocky or arrogant, but I'm going to. In disregards of cannabis, I'm an expert compared to you. More than likely, I'm going to just assume that my knowledge and my use of it is probably far more extensive than yours. And as are some other people out here, so I was going to offer, if you guys have questions, actually ask us, the ones that you serve, to possibly answer them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone a second time, going twice? All right, we're going to close the public hearing at eight forty. The next item is to adopt proposed ordinance fifteen-fifty-four, an ordinance creating chapter sixteen and section sixteen-hundred of the city code. Is there a motion to adopt proposed ordinance fifteen-fifty-four?
So, move Johnson.
We have a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by O'Day?
Chesak.
Chesak.
Chesak, second by Chesak. Thank you, Mr. Chesak and O'Day. Any comments or any questions on the motion? Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to say thank you to the people that spoke. Uh, you know, it's difficult to come up, and a couple of you said that it's difficult to come up and speak to the council about any issue. Uh, but you spoke very elegantly, and I really appreciate that. Uh, let the record also show that I, too, do not like Chapul, or Chapuli. Pachuli. I, too, do not like Pachuli. Pachuli, there we go, got it out. Pachuli, there we go, got it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments on the motion? Any other comments on the motion? We're going to, uh, vote by roll call. Mr. Bergman.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is Item HC, looking to, uh, consider a resolution for denial of the interim use permit for a short-term rental at five fifteen South Ninth Street. This is Mr. Cranbeck.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so staff recommends approval of this resolution, which includes the city council's findings, uh, to deny the interim use permit for a short-term rental at five fifteen South Ninth Street. Uh, this resolution is necessary for denial as the city council is required to produce written findings. And I can certainly answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Cranbeck or any other staff on this issue?
And Mr. Bevins.
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Uh, when we vote, do we have to state the reasons why? Or can we just say, refer to the staff's, uh, or the findings? Would that be appropriate? If we vote to approve the resolution to deny? I guess a city attorney question.
Yeah, James.
Yeah, since it's a resolution, I, I think you simply just have to pass a resolution because the findings are in that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions of staff? Questions of staff? Okay. So, we are looking, uh, for approval of, uh, a, a, a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a mo, move to approve by Chesak, second by O'Day. Any discussion on the resolution? Yep, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. President, yeah, I, I like this resolution and I appreciate it being put together. I, and I would just like to see in the future, when there are split votes or fifty-fifty votes coming out of planning and zoning, that staff could come with reasons that we could use to deny it. Instead of just putting your hands up and saying, I don't know, you better think of a reason. Cause we don't know what the legal reasons are necessarily. But if you could compile that for us, we could better understand what options we have a, as a city. But I like this and I thank you for putting it together, and I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Any other comments on the proposed resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Bergman, please call the roll.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
No. And that resolution is adopted. All right. Next up is Item nine, uh, new business. Consider a variance request for an accessory structure at eleven six seventeen Andrews Street. And that is Mr. Cranbeck. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so applicant Buku LLC has submitted a variance request for the construction of accessory structure to be used as a vocational training facility on the current site that also has office and, and student housing accommodations for the American Institute of Non-Destructive Testing. Uh, the planning commission did consider this request at their last meeting. Uh, there was concern from the commission that this request did not meet one of the requirements for the granting of a variance, which states variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance established that there are practical difficulties in, in complying with the zoning ordinance. Uh, Commissioner Duval stated that a PUD is an option for the applicant as well as attaching to the existing building. Uh, in staff's findings, the applicant stated that the, that connecting the building was concerning from a foundation perspective, uh, and that it would not be ideal to connect to an old foundation based on the investment being made on the new facility. Um, also, a standalone building would need to exceed the five hundred square feet, uh, for the testing facility. The five hundred square feet is what is allowed, um, as an accessory structure in the general commercial district. Uh, the vote at planning commission was a tie at three-three. Uh, the community development department recommends approval of the variance request based on the findings of fact for the construction of an accessory structure at one-one-six-one-seven Andrews Street in the location presented by the applicant. I can answer any questions. The applicant is also here if you'd like to hear from the applicant.
Let's start with questions for staff on the six thousand square foot accessory structure. Chairman Johnson.
So I had a constituent ask me about this one. And we can not give a variance, make them build a five hundred square foot or a smaller building, or we can give the variance that they build a six thousand square foot building. Can we do anything about the building materials? Can we prohibit pole barns or anything of that matter?
So that is already a requirement of the general commercial district. So the entire building can only be, uh, made up of twenty-five percent metal siding. Um, I believe the applicant, and he could speak to it, it, it appears to be some type of horizontal siding, either vinyl or, or wood. So that would, you know, would not be a pole barn type material.
Right, but they could do what the street garage, or the, the impound garage did and put up a steel building with plastic rocks in the front of it and.
And that one's a little bit different, um, because that one's fifty percent of the facade, where this would be seventy-five percent of the entire building has to be some other type of material. So there's a, a little bit more of a standard, but yeah, they would be.
They would take a lot more plastic rocks, but.
It would. Yep.
Nevertheless, thank you.
Nice looking plastic rocks. I will answer your question, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I think so. Any other questions of staff? Any other questions of staff? Okay. So the, the, the recommendation from staff is to approve the variance for the six thousand square foot building. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Uh, Tiffany Stengline.
Yep, so, um, at planning, um, we had a lot of support for the business itself. And infill, all of the, the good things that, uh, James has cited. Uh, the reason why the three votes were against, now I was one of them, um, that is given there is that the PUD is an available option, which would give us some more control, um, as Councilmember Johnson was, uh, asking about. So, um, I will be voting no. Um, I still think that that is a better option for this as a way to actually comply with the ordinance rather than granting a variance.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day.
So I, I'm happy this, you, you guys wanna move this to town and, and, um, I wanna do what we can to help you. I, I'm just, the only thing that I'm concerned about is how it looks. And I can't tell from the renderings how similar to the building next to it.
I can answer that, I'm the owner.
Is that okay?
Uh, if you want, Mr. O'Day, we'll allow him to start, we'll start that process.
But I think he'd like.
So you don't have to guess and.
Yeah.
Come on up.
All right.
It's okay. State your, you have to state your name and address though, cause we're on DVD.
Don Booth, I live in Baxter, one-four-six-three-four Linda Lane. I own some properties in Brainerd as well, obviously. So, to your question, right now, we are in the mode of putting a new roof and vinyl siding with blue trim on the hotel that I bought in twenty-twenty. Now, that hotel has been, was defunct when I bought it. There was a lot of problems. You could talk to the accounting place over, a lot of different things going on over there that now don't. We have our offices there, we have housing. Um, so the new building will be a hundred percent vinyl siding, vinyl windows, uh, thirty-year architectural roof, they'll match. So, once we redo the hotel, which is happening right now, we already pulled the permit for that, and, and, uh, the new building will match that. And yeah, there, we can change the PID or PUD, whatever it is. Um, and the, the point is, is we have power lines, we have wetlands back there. There are a lot of problems. And if I start to move it back there, then it just becomes not financially viable. I know that is not the sole purpose to give a variance. But if a variance is available, I think this is the best reason to give one, to help develop that area. That, so, that area of Brainerd got hit hard when the bypass went in. There hasn't been a lot of development there. In fact, only there's been decline in most of it. I wanna help bring that to that area. It's gonna be a few beautiful buildings, hire more people, employ people, bring people in from all over the world into Brainerd. And, uh, create a lot of revenue on tax base. So, um, no, we're gonna make it match. It's gonna be a beautiful building. It's not gonna be a metal building or anything like that, so.
Is there one more question? You can, please stay.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. O'Day.
So it, it's my understanding that if you were to connect and turn this into an addition, that wouldn't require this type of variance? Is that true? It wouldn't, would or would not?
If it were connected, um, more than just essentially a six-foot breezeway, it would not require a variance at that point.
Is it that big of a, a difference?
It's gonna, it's gonna probably be another hundred and some thousand dollars, and then it may, may bring in the fire, uh, code. And because it's a larger building, right? And, and suddenly, also, and we get a sprinkler system possibly because of the size. And we haven't crossed that bridge yet because that hasn't been calculated that way. Right, as attached. And we haven't had very good clarity on what that, in the, in the planning meeting, it was, well, a twelve-foot hall, hallway that is a storage room too, or serves another purpose than a hallway. And I'm like, well, all right, what is that exactly? Right? So I don't really have any clarity on what that attachment needs to be.
Is it something that you would consider in the future?
Um, I think I, I would, but if it's not financially feasible, I just can't. I mean, especially with interest rates and the way the economy is now, I'm putting my money out there the way it is. It's expensive, and that's not your fault, but it's my problem. And I gotta deal with it if I wanna develop that. And, uh, it's, you know, who knows what's gonna happen the next couple of years? It might be twelve percent interest, I don't know. And when you're financing, uh, you know, a million and a half dollars with different properties, yeah, that's a concern. So, I would like the council to help me, help the community and my business. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Booth? Mister, thank you for coming up, Mr.
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment.
Yes, please.
When I weigh all the pros and cons of this project, the pros way outweigh the cons, so I'll be supporting this a hundred percent.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak. Well, hang on, Mr. Booth.
I, I wanna thank you for doing what you're doing. Uh, the, that particular structure has been blighted, and you've done a good job, from my understanding, of cleaning it up, making it viable. And your addition, I think, is fantastic, and what your plans are, are awesome. And, uh, this, uh, idea of having a connected structure, fire suppression alone is killing housing. When you try to do anything more than a duplex, if I'm not mistaken, it is incredibly costly. And I believe it's anything more than a duplex, which this is not the same, but it would require fire suppression, and it is expensive. It, it kills housing. So I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing, and I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Booth? Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Thank you.
The motion is to approve the six thousand square foot accessory and structure variance. We have a motion, we have a second. This is just a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
No.
That motion carries. Next up is Item nine B, a variance request for accessory structure at two nineteen Laurel Street. Again, Mr. Cranbeck, can you fill us in?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so William Simon has submitted two variance requests for the construction of a twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot garage, uh, at a four-unit residential apartment at two nineteen West Laurel Street. Uh, the proposed garage would exceed the total number of allowed accessory structures, which is one in, in the TC District, as well as a maximum allowed square footage of accessory structures on the property, which is five hundred square feet as well. So this is essentially doubling, almost doubling the square footage number allowed. Uh, this property currently does have the one accessory structure, um, that's the two-car garage. Uh, so this is used for two units. Um, the applicant, uh, would like to install an additional garage, um, to provide two additional units to the other apartments. Uh, this would bring it into greater conformity with the zoning code as, um, there is a garage requirement for, for each unit. Uh, with this planning commission did consider this, can, consider this and did look at the practical difficulty of the existing building would not be, you really would not allow for underground parking or tuck under garages, uh, which is really what's needed in this district to conform with the code. Uh, so with this planning commission recommended approval of both variance requests at two nineteen West Laurel Street based on the findings of facts presented and the request meeting the criteria for approval. Um, the applicant is here if you have any questions. Otherwise, I could answer any questions as well.
Let's start with staff. Any questions of staff on the accessory structure? So far, so good. So staff is recommending both the variance requests at two nineteen West Laurel based on the findings of facts presented and the request meeting the criteria for approval. Is there a motion by council?
Move to approve both variance requests at two nineteen West Laurel Street based on the findings of fact presented and the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Stengline, a second by?
Chesak.
Chesak, thank you. Any questions on the motion? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That, uh, ver, those variance requests are granted. Next up is Item nine C, an interim use permit request for a short-term rental at two-zero-three Hawkins Drive. Mr. Cranbeck.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this is an after-the-fact permit. Staff reached out to the property owners and required them to immediately obtain a rental license and inspection, and apply for an interim use permit for a short-term rental. Uh, the rental license has been issued and the property has been inspected by both the housing inspector and fire marshal. Uh, staff requested the property owner block out all remaining scheduling dates until a determination has been made, uh, for the requested interim use permit for a short-term rental. Uh, planning commission considered this and heard public testimony at, uh, the last planning commission meeting. Uh, public testimony specifically regarding the number of vehicles parked in the right-of-way at times, which led to an additional condition, uh, presented by the planning commission. Uh, also, one thing to note, the applicant stated at the planning commission that, uh, that there are no pets allowed at the property. Uh, but staff, based on the planning commission's recommendations, has still left this in there. Uh, so planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the IUP for a short-term, short-term rental at two oh-three Hawkins Drive with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant includes a limit on pets that conform to the city code. Uh, the applicant restricts the quiet hours after ten PM in accordance with city ordinances. The applicant clearly defines an occupancy limit, uh, for the property not to exceed eight guests or the number set by the building official. Uh, the short-term rental is not allowed to park more than two vehicles on the street. Submittal of the local option sales tax form to the finance department. Upon sale or transfer of the property, the interim use permit for a short-term rental is no longer valid. And the other one that was added at planning commission, the interim use permit shall expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, this would give, um, neighboring properties a chance to comment and, and, and see if, uh, issues have been corrected or if there's any other issues. Uh, with that, I can certainly answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cranbeck. Any questions of staff? And Mr. O'Day.
I just, uh, before we start commenting, how much is a short-term rental permit? How much is, is the cost?
And so an interim use permit for a residential is two hundred and fifty dollars.
For an entire year?
So interim uses are good as long, as long as, um, you know, you can expose, uh, impose expiration dates, um, or the sale or transfer of the property. So it's good in perpetuity. Um, the rental license is every year for thirty-two dollars. Uh, but in, in this instance, if they were to sell the property, a new owner would have to apply again for the two hundred and fifty. Or at the end of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, they would then have to reapply with that two hundred and fifty dollar fee.
Thank you. I'll save my other comments.
Any other comments for staff? Questions of staff? Okay. So staff's recommendation is to approve the interim use permit for one short-term rental unit at 203 Hawkins Drive with those conditions listed by Mr. Kramvik.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
This was also approved by Planning and Zoning, correct? Unanimously?
What was the vote at Planning and Zoning, Mr. Kramvik?
That's correct, unanimously approved.
Unanimous.
Recommended.
Recommended.
Yep. So we're looking for a direction from council as to what way you want to go?
Mr. President, I move to approve the interim use permit for one short-term rental unit at 203 Hawkins Drive with all the conditions listed.
Motion by Stengline, second by Chesak. Any comments on the motion? Mr. O'Day?
So I think this is a slippery slope if we just go ahead and push this through. So think about it this way. If, if I were thinking about having a short-term rental, and I saw this story, two weeks after we denied a permit for a short-term rental, one of those conditions was because they were already operating the short-term rental without a permit. What's, what's to stop you from just doing it anyway? And then paying the consequence later? You could have these pop up all over the city, potentially, and then they have to pay a $500 fine? That's two nights. That's two nights' rent. Nobody cares about that. I think anytime somebody's doing this, and they get caught because staff looks online and sees that they're already breaking the law, breaking the code, they should wait a year. I think this person should wait one year and reapply, and the council at that time can decide. That's my opinion.
Speaking against the motion?
Against.
Any other comments? Or questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so I'm all over the place on, on these short-term rentals. I don't know how I really feel about them in the long run. I think that at some point, you start to affect our, our housing stock. And you're not affecting the low-end housing stock, you're affecting the high-end housing stock. I don't know how I feel about that, right? What I want to see is families moving to Brainerd, I want to see people that are looking to move up this way, to be able to find good, affordable housing that is of that higher-to-mid-level housing stock. That's my main concern with these. At least with this one, when the Planning Commission looked at it, they had taken it down. That was not the case a little bit prior to the meeting, but by the time the meeting came around, they had taken it down. I agree with you, Mike. I think that this is another scenario where you got caught, and then now we're, we're pushing it through to get it through. The one thing I will say is that the interim use does allow for the council to make a decision on where things go forward. So if the council decides to look at what the Planning and Zoning Commission did at the very next item of their Planning and Zoning meeting, to say, bring this back, let's actually start looking at this, and the council decides, we don't want short-term rentals, these are gone. So any of them that we've passed are gone as well. So I, I really don't know how I feel. I completely agree with you, Mike, 100%. I feel the exact same way about this one that I did about the last one. That you're in my city, doing things illegally, and when you got caught, and you didn't come forward, you got caught, and then it's just, well, here's what you gotta do to, to switch it around. So I do still have a problem with it. However, sitting in that meeting, listening to the people's complaints, listening to the, the multiple people that spoke, it seemed like this was pretty much an okay response to it by the homeowners around it. However, I do think that we need to quickly look at this issue, because there, as Mike said, this could get out of hand very, very quickly, very quickly.
It has a many tones.
And I think, I think it will. I think we are ripe for this to get out of hand, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak? I agree with Mr. O'Day and Mayor Bedeau. However, I do appreciate the Planning and Zoning putting a expiration date of December 31st, 2025, so this will be back in less than a year and a half. That's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you. Ms. Stengline?
So that is one of the reasons that date was, was put in. And the mayor mentioned it, but I just want to make sure that it is clear, because you sort of talked around it. We are, this is the next thing on the agenda, is dealing with short-term rentals and what we actually want to have in our city. So let us know.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question of James, if I may.
You may.
So the mayor said, if we decide we don't want these, then they all just go away. But that's not the case, right? Anybody who has a current IUP without an end date on it gets to operate, no matter what we changed the law to, right? They'll just be a non-conforming, existing non-conforming property, right?
So I'll refer to maybe the city attorney, we're gonna have conversations on this. I know our code does allow for, when something's changed in the zoning code for interim uses, you can completely get rid of it. I've seen other ones where, our, our last one for interim uses for short-term rentals made, essentially when the ordinance was passed, made everything comply to that one. So it's a, interim uses operate a little bit different than conditional use permits. Still working through that with the city attorney to, you know, we have to look at our code, state statute. But I believe there would potentially be options to, you know, remove the ones that we've already passed. I don't know if the city attorney could elaborate on that, or if we need some more time to research it.
Give me more time, glad it's on your radar. Yeah, so I, I tend to agree with, with Alderman O'Day that we should treat everybody who broke the law the same, and we already treated one that, no, you don't get a permit. Come back in a year and see how, see what's happening then. But I do appreciate that this is like next up for Planning and Zoning. I like these conditions they put on it. I would have put it December 31st, '24, but I'm not gonna nitpick. I, I do like that it says submitter of the local option sales tax form to the finance department, because that's a monthly form mandated by the Minnesota Department of Revenue, and I don't think any short-term rental in this town files, which means anytime we have a problem, we can look, and if they missed one tax filing, we can pull that permit immediately. So we have an out, because these people are all tax cheats. So we got that going for us. So I'm gonna support the motion.
It almost sounds like you're liking a expiration date on this particular. Chief, did you have something?
I'm good.
You're just, okay. Mr. Mayor had his hand up next.
I, I just want to say that I don't.
Then we'll go round two and three.
I, I don't like the clarification that came from over here, because that didn't feel like clarification. To me, it felt like the opposite of clarification.
It was.
I now feel like I don't know if that's the case. So that, and that's a big sticking point for me. If we're, if we're approving these, and then next week coming back and saying, hey, see you later, but yet this was one of those that was operating illegally, it feels like we just kind of squeaked you through, and I, again, have kind of a problem with that.
So at least with this one, there is an expiration date, so this one would cancel, you know, no matter what. Previous to this, we, we right now only have two operating in the city, so there aren't a number of them legally operating with an interim use permit.
That we know of.
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak, I'm gonna have you hang on. Ms. Stengline had her hand up, and then you're next.
Well, a point of order, I suppose. I believe a motion to amend that date would be in order. Yes, Mr. President?
It certainly could be, but I haven't heard anybody complain about the date yet. What I've heard people argue about is the ordinance, and that's not really the issue here. But we have a tendency to do that. We have a tendency to expand the motion to include every possible argument to do with this ordinance, and that's not the issue. The issue is one house, one permit with these conditions. Yes or no? Now, you can discuss everything else under the sun that you want to, Ms. Stengline, Mr. Chesak, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bedeau, but this is the issue before us tonight. You want to fix the ordinance? I'm hip to that, let's do it. But not, we can't do that tonight. We've got an application that fits our ordinance. Well, except for the fact that they did allow, they did rent beforehand. So why don't we stick to that, and we'll put all the other stuff on fixing the ordinance later. Clearly, it appears the council is inclined to think that there should be an expiration date on any future ones. But I don't want to speak for the council, and I really don't want the council to continue going on, I really want them to vote on this one.
Man, it's five minutes.
What?
Been five minutes.
It's been five minutes. That's all right, we let Jeff Chesak go for hours. He doesn't even speak to the motion.
I do believe this is specific to this motion, is the date of this one.
I want to believe too. Go ahead, and then Chesak's next.
So I will move to amend it, that the permit expired December 31st of 2024.
Okay. So we have a, we have an offer to amend this motion to move it to 2024.
I'll second it.
And there's a second by Johnson. Now we're discussing just the amendment, not the ordinance, just the amendment. Mr. Chesak?
Mr. Chair, this covers both what I was going to say and what I will say. I was gonna say I'm mistaken in what I said, it expires in a year and a half, and I'll be in favor of this motion, because now it will expire in a year and a half.
Right on.
Thank you.
Nice, nice mathematical recovery. Mr. Johnson, anything to say?
I, I support the motion, and I thank Alderman Stengline for offering it.
Hot dog. And hearing nothing else on the emotion, we're voting only on the emotion to change the expiration date to December 31st, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Back to the original motion. Anything else you want to talk about on this particular motion? Not the ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just glad you gave everybody an opportunity to talk about something that we're not talking about.
Right. I'm good at that. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? The motion carries with one nay. Next up is item 9D, the first reading of proposed ordinance 1555, amending section 320, contesting administrative citations. Mr. Kramvik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the proposed ordinance would require residents to correct all zoning issues within 10 days except for accessory structures, which still remains at 30 days, along with property maintenance. The proposed ordinance would also make city council the authority to hear, review, and make a determination for all administrative citation appeals. Staff's recommended motion is to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance number 1555, and ordinance amending section 320 of the city code, and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff of this proposed ordinance? Hearing none, does council have a wish to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to hold the first reading of proposed reading of ordinance 1555, amending section 320, contesting administrative citations. We have a motion to hold the first reading by Chesak, second by O'Day. Any discussion on the motion? And this is also to dispense with the actual reading, correct, Mr. Chesak?
Yes, sir.
Which must be unanimous. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion passes unanimously. Next up, of course, is item E, the adoption of the City of Brainerd data practices policy, which we are moving to the next council meeting. Next up is item F, to set a date for the council workshop classification and compensation study. Chris Hubert, any particular dates you like?
Staff is hoping that we will wrap this up shortly, and that we can do a council work session on September 11th.
9/11?
I moved to set a meeting to review our new compensation study on 9/11 at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM in council chambers, second by Chesak?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the date, time, and place? Chris?
Just one side note as well before you vote. We're hoping to have a council closed session, union negotiation strategy session, on next Monday, the 28th as well. I did not include this in this packet, but I wanted you to be aware of it, so, just so that you're aware that we're doing that as well. So you'll have your budget workshop on the 28th, and then going to that afterwards, is what our plan is.
This is great news. You love these games.
Well, I'm excited we're adjourning to it. I thought we had one tonight.
Perfect. Any other comments on the compensation classification study? On 9/11, 6:00 PM in chambers, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign? We're set. And you had to get everybody all excited about the union stuff, didn't you? All right. Item 10 is public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually like you to keep it to three to five minutes, so we have, if we're not discussing it this evening, and it's important to you, it's important to us, please step forward and let us know. Come on up, Andrew. Guys, take your name and address again.
Yes.
Even though you're a council favorite.
I don't know about that. Andrew Shipe, 711 North Eighth Street, Brainerd.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody at BPU who got the water sorted out last week. On Wednesday, was frantically refreshing the BPU page, because everybody was excited. The notice at the top of the page said, final results were expected Wednesday, August 16th, 2024, which seemed odd. Scrolling down, it then said, latest updates, updated boil water advisory for Monday, August 15th, and then below that, water distribution press release for Monday, August 14th. So there were three dates, and none of them were quite right. So I appreciate every, all the work everyone did, but messaging was confusing at best. So in a retrospective, I'd love to have somebody think about how that could be more clear.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll, we'll work on that, that's for sure. Anybody else, and if you're online, star three lets us know that you have something you'd like to say. I don't see anybody online. I'll give a last call, and it's 9:15, we will close the public forum. Next up is staff reports. Item 11, we'll move over to Chris Hubert. Already kind of made our day. All right? Anything from the attorney department?
Nothing, thank you.
Community Development Director, Kramvik?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just a few items here. So at the next Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing for the off-street parking ordinance that they've been working on over the last few months here. A couple of the items that they're working on is creating parking maximums in all non-residential zoning districts, determining a new standard for the minimum residential parking required, specifically for multifamily, incentivizing businesses to increase bicycle spaces in commercial districts, regulate park, parking on unapproved surfaces in the rear yard, and also require fully enclosed, unattended trailers to be fully enclosed and secured at all times. Second thing is, it was talked about earlier with short-term rentals, Planning Commission has begun to review the short-term rental ordinance, and really looked at how other cities are operating as well. So based on the conversations and direction from Planning Commission, staff will bring a draft ordinance in the next Planning Commission meeting, which may impose potential caps within the city. And lastly, the Community Development Department has begun to include updates of, on construction of planning zoning processes. In the staff report, just wanted to note that if there's any processes that you're wondering where they're at in the past year, that's been included now in the department report. And that's everything.
Thank you. Jesse Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of quick ones. We have all, received our final signed easement for the Buffalo Hills Gully Project, so we're working with the Army Corps, DNR, and Soil and Water to finalize some reviews before coming to the council with the request to advertise for bids. We are also buttoning up the temporary silping and piping on Southwest Fourth Street. We were fortunate to have some advantageous weather to prevent any further erosion of that bank and getting into the street. We are working with Bolton and McTee to develop plans for the permanent fix quickly. This is the top of their list with their design group, and hopefully will be ready to go in the next week or so. So because of that project, unfortunately, I wasn't able to have the electric bike assist first reading of the ordinance at this meeting, but we'll work on having it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Finance Director, anything from the finance department? Anything from ITGIS? Nope, but anything from the police department? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. This Thursday will be the police department's second annual Bags with Badges Bag Toss Tournament. Opportunity for our local youth ages 8 to 17 to, once again, spend some time with public safety, throw some bags, have some refreshments, win some prizes. Like to invite, invite council and staff to feel free to stop by between the hours of 10:00 and 1:00, to say hi. And registration's a little bit down from last year, so we still have plenty of openings, so it's not too late for people to call the Brainerd Police Department and get their kids registered. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Where's that at, Joe?
I'm sorry, thank you. NP Center.
City Administrator, Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, a couple of updates. First of all, I just wanted to start out by saying a big thank you to those who helped with the water distribution. Too countless for me to be able to even list. Between council, staff, BPU Commission, a lot of people stepped up. We were able to donate water Saturday morning from 8:00 until noon, and then once again, last Monday, from 5:30 to 7:30. So just a big thank you. This morning, a few of us had the opportunity to meet with Senator Klobuchar, who was here to take a look at the water tower, and I'm gonna leave more of the details to Mayor Bedeau. And last, but not least, we do have our employee appreciation event coming up on Wednesday, be interested in doing that. September 6th, 11:30 to 1:30 should be a good time. We will also give out awards to our employees. Thanks.
Will there be hairnets?
I think we can manage hairnets. There will be smoked meat.
Hand out water to them. Do we have any left over?
We're good at that.
For some reason, I, I just would've never expected the hairnet question to come from you.
You guys are bushy.
Honorable Mayor Bedeau?
Oh, fantastic. Well, we'll start with what Jennifer passed my way. So, yeah, we had a visit from Senator Amy Klobuchar this morning. Thank you for those that were able to attend. She asked that it be a small gathering. But her reason for coming is that she has included in the federal budget $500,000 to the water tower for its continued preservation. You know, we had a very good conversation about the history of the water tower, what it means to the citizens of Brainerd, what it means to the citizens of the state of Minnesota, and she was very pleased to get a tour of it as well. Did not go up the stairs. She seemed reluctant.
Wise decision.
Some will say a wise decision. I say those stairs look great for how old they are. You know, some of us, some of us are looking better than others, but the stairs are looking good. It was just nice to have her come through, have a visit, and take a look at that structure. As people know, we put the roof on it last year. We are now looking at the stucco, the windows, as well as those stairs in there as well. Sadly, it's 100 feet in the air, and putting scaffolding 100 feet in the air is going to be expensive. However, we've been doing as much as we possibly can as a water tower committee to see if we can't find funding, and this is just an example of that. Going out and finding $500,000, still get across our fingers, the federal government does have to pass their budget. So if you're hoping against that, you and I are now adversaries. However, it's looking good, and we want to thank her for her efforts for that and for her continued support. We also had some conversations about some other things that we're in need of here in the area, specifically that pedestrian bridge over 210 we mentioned. Sadly, we've had some incidents happen in that area. And as a city, I feel very strongly that we have identified safety as something we're very interested in, and specifically safety of people that are just simply trying to get to one, from one place to another. And if we're gonna have a major highway that's coming through the heart of our town, we need to be proactive in, in that search for safety. So, great conversations to have with her. Thank you to everyone that was able to make it. Number two on the list, I don't know if you've seen the sign out here, right in front of City Hall, but it mentions that Chepstow Elbow Convention is happening this weekend. And I don't know if you know, but it's a heck of a good time. So both Friday and Saturday, come on down to the local watering hole. Over 22,000 members, unofficial members of the, the elbow, elbow, the grand elbows, or excuse me, the elbow members.
Loyal order.
Loyal order, yeah. Man, wow, my mouth is-
Teleprompter not working?
Can't read my own handwriting. I'm sorry, Kelly, I'm just talking as much as humanly possible because you don't like it when people talk, so I'm just gonna continue. Lastly, I just want to have, there we go. Lastly, I just want to have the number, a quick comment on one of the items. In reading through our code for our rental licenses, it is very specific that it, we shall, staff shall recommend revocation of rental licenses for various different items. Reading through that, I don't think that it is a far stretch to get to a very clear description that says that we should have had something on this agenda that was the recommendation of the revocation of the license for the property that had the illegal short-term rental. I'm disappointed to see that that is the case, that it did not make it to the agenda. I assume that the staff is working on that, because I think it is very clear that it says we shall recommend the revocation of licenses for such things. So, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go on to council committee reports. We'll start to my right, Mr. Stunek.
A week ago Friday, we cut the ribbon for the new fire department out the airport. It's phenomenal. If you want a tour, get out there. Got a statue in the front.
14 milways.
Any fires, any fires yet?
No, no fires. We put them all out.
Just for show. The statue.
No, there's no statue.
What? Mr. Johnson?
I need a permit for that. We don't do that very well.
Double it. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I have one thing, and you know, I really appreciate all the extra work and unexpected work that staff and BPU and everybody put in with this water boil order. But I, I got an email from a constituent last week, and she just has a bunch of questions. And I think our constituents are owed answers, so I think I'd like to see it in a press release or on the next council agenda or whatever. But here, this isn't an all-encompassing list, but in a short email, you know, she said, I'd like to express my concern about the lack of communication around the city water contamination that occurred on July 27th, why the notification didn't take place till August 10th. I'm not looking for answers right now. There's a handful of questions. I, I would like to see the answers to these questions, though. You know, I think it's absolutely unacceptable. In addition, the description of north Brainerd was also inappropriate. North of what? Boundaries would've been appreciated. My question is, how is the city planning to prevent this from occurring again? How is the city planning to improve its communication with residents? Should such information be necessary? And how is the city planning to continue to treat the drinking waters to reduce contamination from happening in the future? I replied to her, I have a half-answer for most of those questions, but I would just like to see a formal answer from the City of Brainerd. What went wrong? What did we do to fix it? How are we preventing it from happening again? And what are we gonna do to improve our communication? Maybe get a, hire a proofreader or something, but I would like to see those answers, and I think, and I think the people who live in this town and drink our water are deserved those answers too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, I, I think I agree with most of what Mr. Johnson said. It'd be nice to have just a clarification on how this whole thing went down. I know there are a lot of questions I've been getting to. I will say, handing out water Saturday, it's sometimes these situations where we have a lot of different departments come together and work together, and it was, it was really fun to see that. It was, it was a positive time and something that was pretty negative. So I think every single department was represented at least in some way that day, and everyone just did their best to, to make it efficient, and we did. So thank you all for doing that. End of report.
Thank you. Tiffany, Dangline?
Uh, two quick things. The senator did say that when the water tower was done, she would go up with you. So that, um, yeah.
Now we're getting an elevator.
What do you think the half million dollars is for? I did the water distribution on Wednesday, and I was very surprised, in a good way, that the people who were there were so pleasant and excited to, you know, be there, and the people who were there getting water. I, I had envisioned them being much more frustrated and angry with us, and they were not. Our citizens were very patient waiting in those lines and, you know, very pleasant to deal with. I was very surprised in a good way, because I was frustrated.
Thank you. Mr. Chesek? Thank you, Mr. President. I think I can maybe add or give a somewhat answer to Mr. Johnson's concerns. And as the Public Utilities Liaison, first of all, I wanted to say a water boil order is not really that bad. It gets really bad when you turn your faucet on and nothing comes out. That's something to really think about. Public Utilities Workshop, I am a little disappointed because the director and none of the Public Utility Commission members indicated anything about the issue related to copper in the water.